I'm calling in for the Sierra County Board, Commissioner's Boarder. And I'd like to offer a rise and take a pledge of allegiance. What allegiance do you believe in? United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sounds good to have a hospital, don't you? Next thing, the agenda is to approve the agenda. And we have one addition that comes to the... Under County Board Work Session 22A, and that's a discussion with the CCA about the potential. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
There's two corrections also. On the anniversary report, page 109, we need to remove Buridette Taylor from that. On page 104, on the proposed draft ordinance there, we need to remove health. It's Min Prairie County Alliance, not Min Prairie County Health Alliance. So those are the two corrections.
Oh, okay. Okay, with those changes and corrections, I'll make a move to approve the agenda. Okay, is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I want to thank you all for coming, and I think you're probably all here for pretty much the same reason. I and we, I think, appreciate your involvement in this process as it moves forward. And we know everyone will be respectful of the comments. So with that, we're going to open it up for public comment. Those wishing to speak must state their name and address for the record. After they are acknowledged by the Board Chair, each person will be limited to two minutes to make his or her remarks. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. The Board may not take action on an item presented during the public comment period unless the item is already on the agenda for action. When appropriate, the Board may refer inquiries and items brought up during the public comment period to the county administrator for follow-up. And as you rise to make public comments, state your name and your address.
Robert Grantz, 7589 County Road 13, Nissaw, Minnesota. But I own the property on 26th Street that you want to take and put a bridge on across for your new development. And my biggest concern is the flood bridge. We, when I, 18 years ago, I fought for the city about the new development next to me. And, but they filled the flood bridge, and that's when you guys got flooded at your county shop. And now if you build a bridge, if you don't build it long enough so that the water can flow through, you just build a small bridge, you're going to flood my son out of my old house who I'm selling it to right now. And so if you're going to do it there, you're going to have to go back to the flood bridge. It's quite a ways both directions. It's going to be a huge, huge bridge. It doesn't have to be very high, but I was a bridge worker to the state of Nissaw for 42 years. I was an inspector for 15. And I've seen what water can do if you try to narrow it down. And so I did some research in this County Road 34, which is a half a mile from my place. And the township roads aren't there anymore, but there, if you look over Area Holdens, you can see it. If you talk to old timers, they remember to cut off that by a bar three. And it goes straight, straight through, and it used to go all the way to Rose Street. When I was a kid, it was kind of a cutoff to go to Great Bureau. But it used to be, and there was a bridge right there, but they took the bridge out. But all those easements should still be there. That was the township cartway. And so what I'm saying is, probably for a half a mile, that's 30 seconds longer to make it to 34 and go straight across than to cut through my, my property and endanger my son's house from getting flooded. Because it's a huge flood, flood bridge, and if you, we had water within 50 feet of our house when everybody got flooded. We had 20. You could take a jet ski out in our field, that would tell them to water it back out there after the city started doing the development and filling. And then I have, also had some pictures of how the township road washed out. And it washes out all the time. And the county was supposed to take care of it, but they, it hasn't washed out in a couple of years now. But it was washing up 10 times a year. And they, they have a history of not building big enough cul-de-sacs. And so that's why I'm saying you got to build a big enough bridge. Because otherwise you're going to put my son underwater. And that's, I drove four hours from Nissaw to come talk at this meeting just to make that. So we got, if you're going to build a bridge there, I would like to make sure that you span, it doesn't have to be very high, like a foot and a half up, but still building a bridge to open it up so the water can flow through. Because if you're going to dam it up, you're guaranteeing my son will get flooded out. And so that, that's all I have to say. I appreciate you letting me talk, and thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Mike Comrade, 424 12th Street, Southeast, Olatana. I'm with the Old Town Steel County Amateur Radio Club. And the 24th and 5th is our annual field day event out at the Kinley School. And we would encourage you to come up, take a look, and let us demonstrate what amateur radio can do.
That's always interesting.
Hope I can see one or two of you out there. Thank you.
Does it start?
The on-air portion is 1:00 PM Saturday to 1:00 PM Sunday. Yes, that's 24 hours.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next?
Good afternoon. Just like to type this up to stay with my team, so. It's clearly shown in the 2006...
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Matthew said, 2519 Stoney Creek Drive. And this is the Maggrosity Sec. Project. It's clearly shown in the 2006 Oatana City Development Plan and the Steel County Environmental Studies in 2004 and 2011. The road currently being proposed next to our neighborhood was not right for Oatana then. Fast forward to present day Oatana, and the location for this road makes even less sense now. The town has grown, and there's now a fully developed neighborhood alongside this proposed route. To force such a road, which is clearly shown to have been upsized from its original designation as a collector to now a minor arterial with speeds of 55 miles an hour, is dumbfounded. Putting such a road in the same location as a plan that was dismissed as not feasible almost 20 years ago is short-sighted. It's unsafe and irresponsible, and lacks long-term planning and vision. We have time and time again our concerns for, especially those related to the safety of children playing in this very area today in the backyards that are alongside this proposed route. Not one, not two, but numbers in the double digits of kids playing in this very area and in these backyards today. Several with special needs. What type of plan goes into proposal to put a 55 mile an hour truck route next to a milk town, fully developed neighborhood, is beyond me. 26th Street is often cited as a precedent to try and justify this proposed road's location. But I think we both know what came first, the road, not the neighborhoods. And I'll just briefly mention, property values are obviously going to be impacted in our neighborhood. Were the values of these homes, building on 26th negatively affected? Well, no, because the people bought there, and they built there, and they paid what the market value was being on the road. So we must ask ourselves why certain numbers, members of the county are so much in favor of this road's location designated as 29th Avenue. One reason mainly, this stands out to me anyway, and that's money. Money at the sacrifice of long-term vision and planning, money at the sacrifice of property values, and most definitely money at the sacrifice of the safety of the neighborhood and our children. We residents of the Country View neighborhood and connecting streets are your constituents. We demand better representation and consideration. We've heard countless times in previous meetings that Oatana wants to develop this area on the east side of town. And that makes sense, and it's great. But why are we sticking a 55 mile an hour truck route right through the heart of it? That doesn't seem to make sense to me. Again, I think it speaks to the point, this is not a term, a long-term plan or vision in the best interest of citizens. And it's again, the sole interest of money. We very much want ongoing dialogue with you on this project, but largely up to date, it's been one-way. Many times forced through communications, questions. The only two-way communication has been at some of these meetings that were set up. The first one poorly communicated with only a week or two notice, it seems, it seems. And at the worst time, the the urban people were out on vacation and away from town. So we ask for your consideration of moving this route out to one that's already designated as route of right-of-way. That's 34th Avenue, as brought up by the gentleman down there. And it's, it just seems to make a whole lot more sense. Appreciate you hearing me out today.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm speaking for 28 people that had signed a note that I had started.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Maslinsky, 2570 Fox Hollow. So it's a note that I put together that they had also co-signed, so I won't deviate from that. I'll just read it to you. "The residents of our neighborhood appreciate your consideration. The new east side corridor should not be built at the currently proposed location that would intersect with East Rose, Fox Hollow, and Timberwood. A common highway with a 55 mile per hour speed limit intersecting two residential streets, Fox Hollow and Timberwood, within 1,000 feet is dangerous for the children playing in the neighborhood, for the families utilizing the neighborhood streets, and for the drivers flying down the highway at 55 miles per hour. Intersections of a highway that are so close together will make it difficult for drivers to identify hazards and mitigate accidents. The danger is exponentially escalated by the third intersection within five blocks, East Rose Street, which at point of intersection is a 45 mile per hour highway, Highway 19. Three speed limits and three intersections within five blocks is a recipe for disaster. Erecting it in a residential neighborhood is a recipe for injury and death. If the new east side corridor must be built at this location, please protect the neighborhood residents and those driving on the highway by eliminating part of the danger. Instead of making it an intersection, please make Fox Hollow Lane a cul-de-sac. In addition, please create a safety barrier between the cul-de-sac and the highway. A five-foot tall berm planted with mature evergreen trees should provide protection, a sound barrier, and an aesthetically pleasing backdrop to hide the highway." And then there follows with a list of the 28 names, which I had given you also, so take the time reading that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll speak. Melissa Zimmerman, 2525 Stony Creek Drive. Also speaking through the east side corridor. From day one, it has been our utmost concern of safety for this road. The road doesn't make sense going right along our neighborhood. The safety of the kids, as Matt said, they're in the double digits. 20, 30 kids running in the back lots at all times. Many of them with special needs. And safety has always been our utmost concern, and throughout the entire process that we've been down this road, we have not been listened to, and we've been lied to. We have asked about safety features, and we were told, hey, we'll put in safety features. But at the same time, Paul, the assistant engineer, has told us, and I quote, "Why would we do anything for the homeowners here? We didn't do anything on 26th Street." But 26th Street was built before the houses. At last meeting we're at, he said, and I quote, "It's up to, or, excuse me, if I have my way, none of those safety measures would be put in." And a third time, he said, "It's up to you as the homeowners to come up with the safety measures you want and bring them to us to let us know," despite our asking them for different options of what safety measures we could put in place. So it is clear that Paul and the county do not have the safety of our families and kids in mind. And furthermore, we've also been told at these meetings that we've been to that the kids are a parenting issue rather than the county having to do anything to put safety measures in place. In talking with the neighborhood and farmers along the way, County Road 34 is the ideal path. It bisects less farmlands, it runs along less houses, it allows the road to be at 55 miles an hour. It doesn't have to slow down for anything, it allows a straight road, and it has the right-of-way. So we're not really sure how County Road 34 no longer is an option. Besides the fact that we were originally told, hey, that alternate corridor there, it's two miles away, so that's too far away. As it turns out, it is less than half a mile from our houses, and probably closer to a quarter of a mile from the start of this road on the north side of town. So the difference of starting there versus starting at County Road 34 is 15 seconds on a commute that is already increased by 20%. So at the end of the day, what's 15 seconds more for the safety of so many people?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Brian Demel, 2526 Stony Creek Drive. I just want to mention both as a business owner and as a resident in that neighborhood of Stony Creek Drive. Growing up, actually just outside of town, two miles, but our shop, our original shop was, was not even a mile off of County Road 34. We used that crossroad, what we used to call the crossroads extensively for work because our shop was just literally a few blocks off, and use the crossroad to get to north side of town when the whole north side of town was built. That was our main path. When we eventually moved our business into town, at the old General Equipment Building down on, off of Shady, definitely is a major traffic change to try and get to north side of town from that side. So this whole process of having an east side corridor is awesome in a business standpoint. Because trying to get from north side of town to south side of town is not a good flow pattern anywhere through town, aside from jumping on the freeway. Or on the west side, getting to County Road 7 is definitely a blessing as well. But the east side corridor is great. We just don't necessarily need to have it quite so close to town. Because if we feel like we're going to expand, which I hope that we do with our town, that's the opportunity, or space to grow is off of, you know, inside of County Road 34. So I think that County Road 34 would be the most judicious use of space and expansion of town. That was all.
Next one.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Annalise Meir, 2551 Mossy Creek Drive. Again, speaking to the east side corridor. As a resident of that neighborhood, we definitely see that there needs to be an east side corridor. We have understood that from the very beginning. None of the community here denies the fact that Oatana needs an eastern corridor that runs to our south. I think that the information that has come to us and the opportunities to speak with representatives has been very one-sided. I feel like we've been given opportunities to speak, but we're not really listened to. We kind of, I kind of feel like both the city and the county are making decisions and just doing whatever the heck they want to do despite their constituents feeling strongly against the decisions that they're... Clearly, all of the people here that are speaking against this, apparently 19th Avenue, option are against that. I think that it is your responsibility as our representatives and to represent our needs, both from an investment standpoint and a safety standpoint, and also looking at developing our city. So please encourage the development of County Road 34 instead of County Road 19. It will completely decimate our property values and put our kids at risk. And it is your responsibility as our representatives to advocate for those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This way.
My name is Sue Malinbach, 2535 Mossy Creek Drive. Our house is at the very southern end of Country View that would have led up to the proposed lot. When we bought that lot 18 years ago, we were never, ever told there would be a road in there. A few years ago, we tried to buy the land behind us that the city owns. And we were rejected, and we couldn't buy it. Our house and our property taxes is valued at $500,000, just under $500,000. This year, we will pay just under $8,000 in taxes. The proposed road will go within a few feet of our back door. In one of the minutes that I read, it said, "A citizen in Oatana had asked that that area be used for a road. That's what it was for." And the reply was, "We listen to all the citizens. I hope you listen to my personal plea to move the road, place it out further." I recognize the need for it, but it is a safety concern, as others have spoke to. My husband, Don, is not here tonight because he has dementia. If somehow he would wander, that road is within just feet of our back door. What if? What if? We're on the other side of the children, you know, with the senior consideration. There's a row of townhomes there. Don isn't the only one with dementia in that area. Now you look at me and you say, well, you know, she's a senior. In a few years, that issue won't be hers, and, you know, so we won't have to consider it. When we go to sell our house, are we going to get $500,000? In a few years, when we want to sell it, will it appreciate with a road a few feet from our back door? I hope I'm a citizen that you listen to my personal plea. I feel like our property value is being ripped from us. So if there's anything that you remember about me tonight, remember two words, "What if?" What if? When it could have been a move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This way.
Jeff Otto, 2490 Fox Hollow Lane. And I just wanted to speak to the results of the study that was presented at the Main 31st Open House. That study came up with a preferred plan of alternative three, I think it was labeled, above some, to our neighborhood. There was an alternative for maybe 200, 300 feet to the east that the study deemed as too far out of the way and wasn't even included as part of the study. So questioning why 200 or 300 feet makes something too far away and cannot even be considered as part of the study just kind of gives an impression that maybe you already had an answer that you wanted, and the study didn't really evaluate all of the options. Looking for clarification on specifically that alternative for why something so close was deemed too far to travel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Jennifer Webster. My address is 2490 Stony Creek Drive in Oatana. We are a small business owner who run our business out of our home. I'm a parent of a special needs child, and we've been there now for 18 years. I just wanted to concur what Brennan Demo said about how easy it would be and how nice as a business owner, someone who's leaving their, you know, our office several times a day to make service calls in and around town. We're just, just around the corner to where Timberwood would intersect with this potential road if it goes in where it's planned. From a business standpoint, it does make a lot of sense. But, but me and my husband and I know that, or believe in, the safety of the adults and children in our neighborhood much before our business. We would put that safety ahead of, ahead of dollars any day, and save gas time and, and just time spent on the road to get to the other parts of town. And so I just want to encourage you to, to do the same, maybe to put the safety above the dollars here. And join us in keeping everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this has all been recorded, so this will all be passed on. And I'm sure there's going to be several more meetings coming up on this. So I appreciate you all involved. And like I said at the beginning, I'm glad everybody kept it very respectful and they want you to stand up. Because, you know, as well as, you know, when we're out in the mountain, hear from the other side too. So, but I'm sure there'll be many more meetings on this before anything is resolved. It's just in the planning process. So with that, I want to thank you all for coming and appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
With that, Scott, my next number, and then these correspondence, anything there that needs to be read. Okay, now, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Where are the board's wishes? Take a second to that?
A second.
Okay. Any comments about anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, she carries. Now, we're a little late for this, but I think what we were talking about was very important. We'll now open up the public hearing to hear comments on proposed Steel County Housing Trust Fund Ordinance. Mr. Chair, board members, I can just make a few brief comments on this. What's being proposed tonight is the adoption of a local housing trust fund ordinance. The ordinance really is a, excuse me, is a means to establish a kind of an overall governance document, kind of a framework of how to administer housing funds that are coming our way. So you're considering both the ordinance adoption as well as the appropriation of the local housing... ...town. That was all. Next one.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Annalise Meir, 2551 Mossy Creek Drive. Again, speaking to the east side corridor. As a resident of that neighborhood, we definitely see that there needs to be an east side corridor. We have understood that from the very beginning. None of the community here denies the fact that Oatana needs an eastern corridor that runs to our south. I think that the information that has come to us and the opportunities to speak with representatives has been very one-sided. I feel like we've been given opportunities to speak, but we're not really listened to. We kind of, I kind of feel like both the city and the county are making decisions and just doing whatever the heck they want to do despite their constituents feeling strongly against the decisions that they're... Clearly, all of the people here that are speaking against this, apparently 19th Avenue, option are against that. I think that it is your responsibility as our representatives and to represent our needs, both from an investment standpoint and a safety standpoint, and also looking at developing our city. So please encourage the development of County Road 34 instead of County Road 19. It will completely decimate our property values and put our kids at risk. And it is your responsibility as our representatives to advocate for those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This way.
My name is Sue Malinbach, 2535 Mossy Creek Drive. Our house is at the very southern end of Country View that would have led up to the proposed lot. When we bought that lot 18 years ago, we were never, ever told there would be a road in there. A few years ago, we tried to buy the land behind us that the city owns. And we were rejected, and... And we were rejected and we couldn't buy it. Our house and our property taxes is valued at $500,000, just under $500,000. This year, we will pay just under $8,000 in taxes. The proposed road will go within a few feet of our back door. Um, in one of the minutes that I read, it said, "A citizen in Oatana had asked that, that area be used for a road, that's what it was for." And the reply was, "We listen to all the citizens. I hope you're listening to my personal plea to move the road, uh, place it out for the..." I recognize the need for it, but it is a safety concern as others have spoke to. My husband, Don, is not here tonight because he has dementia. If somehow he would wander, that road is within just feet of our back door. What if? What if? We're on the other side of the children, you know, with, with the senior consideration. There's a row of townhomes there. Don isn't the only one with dementia in that area. Now you look at me and you say, well, you know, she's a senior. In a few years, that issue won't be hers and, you know, so we won't have to consider it. When we go to sell our house, are we going to get $500,000? In a few years, when we want to sell it, will it appreciate with a road a few feet from our back door? I hope I'm a citizen that you listen to my personal plea. I feel like our property value is being ripped from us. So if there's anything that you remember about me tonight, remember two words, "What if?" What if? When it could have been moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This way.
Jeff Otto with 2490 Fox Hollow Lane. And I just wanted to speak to the, the results of the study that was presented at the May 31st Open House. Um, that study came up with a preferred plan of alternative three, I think it was labeled, um, above some to our neighborhood. Um, there was an alternative for maybe two, 300 feet to the east that the study deemed, um, as too far out of the way and wasn't even included as part of the study. So, questioning why two or 300 feet makes something too far away and cannot even be considered as part of the study, um, just kind of gives a impression that maybe you already had an answer that you wanted and the study didn't really evaluate all of the options. Looking for clarification on specifically that alternative for why something so close was deemed too far to travel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Professor Webster, my address is 2490 Stony Creek Drive in Oatana. We are, um, a small business owner who run our business out of our home. I'm a parent of a special needs child, um, and we've been there now for 18 years. Um, I just wanted to concur what Brian Dammel said about how easy it would be and how nice as a business owner, someone who's leaving their, you know, our office several times a day to make service calls, um, in and around town. We're just, just around the corner to where Timberwood would intersect with this potential road if it goes in where it's planned. Um, from a business point, standpoint, it, it does make a lot of sense, but, but me and my husband and I know that, um, or believe in the safety of the adults and children in our neighborhood much before our business. We would put that safety ahead of, ahead of dollars any day and save gas time and, and, uh, just time spent on the road to get to the other parts of town. And so I just, uh, want to encourage you to, to do the same, maybe to put the safety above the dollars here. And, um, join us in keeping everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this has all been recorded, so this will all get passed on. And, uh, I'm sure there's going to be several more meetings coming up on this, so, um, I appreciate you all involved and like I said at the beginning, I'm glad everybody kept it very respectful and, uh, we want you to stand by. Because, uh, you know, as well as, you know, when we're out in mountain, hear from the other side too, so. But, uh, but I'm sure there'll be many more meetings on this before anything is resolved. It's just in the planning process, so, uh, with that, I want to thank you all for coming and appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
With that, Scott, my next gentleman, and then his correspondence, if anything there that needs to be read. Okay, now, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Where are the board's wishes? Okay, a second to that?
A second.
Okay, any comments about anything on the consent agenda? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Well, she carries. Uh, we're a little late for this, but I think what we were talking about was very important. We'll now, uh, open up the public hearing to hear comments on proposed state county housing trust fund ordinance.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, uh, I can just make a few brief comments on this. What's being proposed tonight is the adoption of a local housing trust fund ordinance. The ordinance really is a, excuse me, is a means to establish a kind of an overall governance document, kind of a framework of how to administer housing funds that are coming our way. So you're considering both the ordinance adoption as well as the appropriation of the local housing, or the local homeless convention aid that's coming in too. The ordinance itself will establish the county as the trustee, so the funds will be held here with the county, uh, separately from, from other counties. And we'll designate, uh, Min Prairie as the administrator, uh, which is kind of your day-to-day worker bee, if you will, um, of carrying out the activities that you're approving to use these funds for. And then you'll also consider, um, appointing a, an oversight committee, an advisory committee, which one of you can serve on to provide sort of the planning of how to use these funds, where the priorities-